The regular meeting of the Bellevue Zoning Board of Adjustment for August 6, 2015, will now come to order. First, before we do anything, we have to swear in our Vice Chairman, Mr. Valano, to another term.
If you could raise your right hand, and repeat that from the eye, William Valano. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and to the governments established in the United States, and in this state, of the authority of the people. I, William Valano, do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of Bellevue Zoning Board of Adjustment according to the best of my abilities. So help me God.
Okay, now that we have that done, Clerk Colerole.
Carusa, Gianna, Mafalana, Smith, Sheldon, Mafucci, Valano, and Phil Gershia.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, has notice of this treaty been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, notice of this treaty has been given to the press in accordance with the open public meetings.
Okay. Has everybody read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, can, does anybody wish to comment or make a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Carusa to accept, seconded by Mr. Valano. Clerk Colerole.
Carusa, Gianna, Mafalana, Smith, Sheldon, Mafucci, Valano, Phil Gershia.
Yes. Okay. Applications for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, Council's name is Robert Gassion. I am seeking to adjourn 274-276 Bellevue Avenue, which was never served in view of the fact that we knew our client was on vacation for this evening.
So therefore, it never belonged on the agenda because it was, no notice was given?
Well, no notice was given, so it didn't have to be on the agenda, but obviously, we will notice for the next meeting.
Okay.
With regard to the Brighton Avenue case, two developments on that. One, the engineers or surveyors have now, I believe, agreed upon the total area, I think there's about a, I don't want to testify, but I think about a 500 square foot difference from what had been presented previously. But that difference is right at a crucial spot with regard to the turnaround in the back of the property, and our engineer, the agreement with regard to the survey, I think we just reached this week, so our engineer needs time to redo that plan and get it in with regard to that turnaround in the back of the building. And I have written a letter to the governing body requesting a right to lease that piece of land that has now been determined not to belong to my client, and I understand that that will be on the agenda soon as to whether or not they'd be interested in leasing it. Obviously, it's my opinion, they might very well be interested in leasing it because there are many people that use part of that canal, and they probably would be a good source of income for the municipality.
Well, that would be between the applicant and the town body.
That's correct.
Nothing to do with this board. However, it would have something to do with this board possibly in the future if it's going to be included in an application.
It is not included at this time, but it is something I am trying to take.
I want to point out that Mr. Harris went over the new survey that was provided by, I believe, your engineer?
Yes, by surveyor in the same company as the engineer.
Okay. He went over it. There was three members of the board that sat with him, me, Mr. Sheldon, and Mr. Mafucci, and also Mr. Fran and Tony was invited since he had brought up the issue of this, and it was all agreed that the new survey is correct. I even have copies of a survey that was done by Mr. Harris maybe 15 years ago concerning the Morris Canal, which I can give every member either tonight or next month when we hear the case, whichever the members would like to do, and they could look at that to show that the survey is correct and the Morris Canal is only involved in that one corner where you have mentioned. Okay? So any members of the public, the two cases, let's get to, while we're on Brighton Avenue, let's get to that. That's ZB 2014-08, 138-146 Brighton Avenue. That will be carried over to next month's meeting on Thursday, September 3, 2015. There will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper. And the second case on the agenda, ZB 2015-15, 274-276 Bellevue Avenue, that will show up on our agenda next month, but that will require a notice to everyone who owns property within 200 feet of the property and has to be published in the newspaper as a notice that it will be on that night on the meeting. Otherwise, it will not be heard that night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gassion, not having been privy to what's been going on with Brighton Avenue application, is it your view that the plans may change significantly?
Ever so slightly, the site plan may change as you come into the turn around the rear of the building.
Not enough to, I mean, you have, you have good notice originally, it's been carried over the months. In your view, is it, does it modify the plan enough to require new notice?
I only think it's a foot or two differential in the turning area as you first start to make the turn behind the building, but I haven't seen that ever.
Everything else is the same?
Everything else is the same.
Well, I believe, Mr. Gassion, when the application was originally made in error, everyone within 200 feet, including the part involving the Morris Canal, was notified. So therefore, even if they end up leasing that part, everyone within 200 feet of that has been notified already, so it's academic technically. And, and the only thing that will change, the survey would stay the same. The survey is showing that one slip of property that is not the applicant's property, but part of the Morris Canal, and it would show, how it would show if they do lease or what they originally set thought it was. So that's on the original survey that we went over. You have a question, ma'am?
A point of order I'd like to request. Do I have to state my name?
Yes.
Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue. That's the adjoining property of 138-146 Brighton Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank the board members who took their own time and effort to drive out to Brighton Avenue to check into the discrepancies of the application. You did that on your own time and your own effort. We thank you very much. We were told at the last hearing that no matter what happened tonight, that we would proceed with our testimony and that possibly the case would end tonight. Now, many people work at night, they come to work here, they've driven some 16, 17 miles, they used to live on Brighton Avenue, they'd be here tonight. We've prepared testimony of maybe 60 photos with matching transcripts. This has been going on since last October. Now we're to believe that it's going to be adjourned to accommodate a quarter of land so there'll be enough turning space in the parking lot of 138-146 Brighton Avenue. Now, they've had since last October to settle this, and I'm really surprised that this is just coming up now, and I think it's unfair to the public who've shown up meeting after meeting. I think it's unfair to you because you ought to sit through all this since last October. I mean, every single time we've had to accommodate is adjournments. Did we ever ask for an adjournment? No, we came here in the snow, it didn't matter.
If you did, I could tell you right now, I would have granted it for you. I'll be honest with you, I'm fair both ways. Now, wait a minute, we can do two things here tonight, and I'll leave it up to Mr. Gassion because both sides have to agree, okay? If you wish to present what you want, you can, but there is a problem with that, and I'm going to tell you why. Because if he brings new testimony afterwards, because they may lease the property, then we'll have to open it up to the public all over again, and I want to try and expedite this case as fast as possible because, like you said, it has been going on since last October, and none of the members of the board get paid. It's not like we're getting money for coming to us.
We don't get paid either.
I understand that. He does, that's about it. Yes, Mr. Valano?
Anthony, our last point is, we didn't know, we didn't know he was going on vacation or whatever he was doing.
Well, I got this call this afternoon, and I called Mr. Fran and Tony immediately, and I asked them to call Ms. Higgins. That I did this afternoon as soon as I found out about, and this was in the early afternoon.
I understand that, I'm asking.
I'm just saying how I tried to resolve this problem.
I'm just saying, like, I wasn't here in July, but I was on vacation, and I announced I would be on vacation.
Right, you did, and that's why we pushed it over to tonight.
Right, so I'm asking that, I'm not saying you're bad, don't miss it.
Well, let me explain what happened. So the objectors raised an issue. That's why the survey was changed. That's why all this investigation, and the investigation happened to turn up a mere...
No matter what, we had this meeting tonight.
We had a mere 500 square feet, but it turns out the 500 square feet involves a potentially crucial part of the property.
And that's a good thing. All I meant, the question I asked was that your applicant couldn't be here tonight?
My applicant was scheduled to be here. I called and thought an adjournment would be granted, and of course, because of the reasonableness of my request, and my architect's here to tell you what to do.
The adjournment's not because of the applicant from the venue?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, that's not...
All my witnesses were ready, and in fact, my architect's here because I didn't notice him.
Okay, that's all I wanted, okay, then I'm fine.
Because technically, right now, we've gotten all the testimony we have up to now. Now, he may get additional property, he may not. It's between the applicant and the town council. We have nothing to do with whether he gets to lease the property, okay? The thing is, I really do not want to go with public testimony twice. I want to get it out of the way. Anything he's bringing up is not being brought up twice. He's bringing new testimony if they get the council to agree on anything. There is also one other thing here I want to point out. We're lucky tonight. We have everyone who is on this board who's been appointed here, and last month we wouldn't have had that, we had two members missing, which is why I pushed it off to this month, okay? But also, I want to point out that I don't know who's going to be at next month, but currently, we're one member short because the council has to appoint another second alternate to the board, which they have not done as of yet, plus our engineer isn't here. So, but our engineer, I don't think is needed for this case right now. Not right now, maybe in the future, but right, not right now because we went over everything with this survey.
Yeah, we would like him here.
All right, Mr. Valano would like him here, so we could do that, you know, next month. But what I'm saying is, I'm trying to expedite this, and I'm trying to get as many cases out of the way so the agenda doesn't get backed up, which I think I've been very good at up to now. This case has gone very far, I've tried, everybody, people complained they weren't getting that stuff that they needed, I made sure who's got it. I've been trying to be very fair, and that's why I invited Mr. Fran and Tony the day we had that meeting, to try and resolve this. So I really think this is the only fair way to do this.
Yes. I'm not sure if the public knows about this, but to your permission, I'd like to read this short letter written by Mr. Gassion.
I already know about the letter, ma'am.
No, the public doesn't know. Can I just read it to them quickly?
All right, you can read it to them, it's what I did great address earlier.
Thank you, real fast. This letter was addressed to Kevin Esposito, Ten Shit Matter, dated July 27, 2015. Was it last week?
Yes, it was.
Dear Mr. Esposito, as you know, our office represents Wright Gardens. During the course of the application, an issue has come up with regard to the exact property line that separates my client's property from the Erie Canal property, not Morris Canal, Erie Canal. Based on my knowledge, I believe there is certainly a question as to exactly where the Erie Canal property line is. However, my client is willing to accept the line as drawn by the municipal engineer, Tom Harris, provided my client is able to enter into a long-term lease with the municipality for the area which my client's engineer thought belonged to my client. My client also would be willing to lease additional property from Bellevue to the rear of this parcel should the municipality be interested in such a lease. That's in our backyard. May I please hear from you at your earliest convenience as this matter is currently pending before the Bellevue Zoning Board? And here we are. Thank you for your, any attention you give to this matter, very truly yours, Robert A. Gassion. Thank you, I just wanted the public to know what was going on. Thank you. I just want to ask them if they want to go on with this tonight or next time.
I don't think they can because we have an agenda, and really, you should give your testimony after he is completed with any new testimony he may give. The public gets the right to talk last.
Okay, thank you, we agreed then, and again, I just want to thank you for your help and your patience.
No problem.
And what is this supposed to involve?
So when's the next hearing?
It's Thursday, September 3. And will there be any further adjournments at that time? Well, I hope not.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, the public gets their chance to talk, I got to sum up as it might.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, that's the normal procedure because I don't want to say any right now.
Oh, okay, good, that's even better.
For sure. Take care.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Now, we'll finally come up with the last case on the agenda tonight. It's going to be...
Let me write it down there.
The case to be heard is ZB 2000, everyone please not talk until you get out of the room, please, we're on tables. ZB 2015-11, that's 258-260 Washington Avenue Limited Liability Corporation. Our applicant proposes to construct a one-story addition to the two-and-a-half-story section of the building and renovate the entire building for two retail-use spaces facing Washington Avenue and 13 residential units with parking spaces at the lower level. And I believe you will be the attorney of record.
Yes, Chairman.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is...
Excuse me, I just wanted to point out that notice about application serves as another, let's wait a couple seconds.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to start?
Thank you, Chairman. My name is Joe Sardell, I'm an attorney with Matt Ford, Deutsche, Slovenian Carpenter. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 258-260 Washington Avenue LLC. They are the applicant and the owner of the property. As the Chairman pointed out, we are looking to renovate and rehabilitate the existing building, including a one-story addition on the rear building portion of the building in the property. The property is block 8701, block 10, 258-260 Washington Avenue, so it's in a B.C. office business zone. It's currently, excuse me, we're here for site plan approval and variance relief. We need a number of variances, a use variance, a density variance. A use variance as the mixed use, the residential portion of the mixed use is not permitted in the zone. A density variance as no residential units are permitted in the zone, and we are proposing 13, and as well as some parking variances and bulk variances that our professionals will go through, the specifics of each one of those is quite suggestive for it. Just by way of small background, we had previously been before the board and on this piece of property and started an application for a similar type development except we had a higher density at that time and less parking. We appeared before the board, we started making our presentation, we heard the board's concerns, we heard the public's concerns, and we decided to withdraw that application. We worked the design, and now back before the board with a different, a slightly different modification to the property where we're increasing the number of parking spaces from what we previously proposed, and we are reducing the number of residential units that we previously proposed from 17 down to 13, and increased the parking up to 13 units, that was on-site parking, I should say, that was previously, I believe, we were...
How many, how many parking spaces?
13 on-site parking spaces.
That's what you're proposing?
Yes, in this application.
Okay.
I have two witnesses with me this evening. I have an architect, Nasir Al-Mukhtar, and Michael Lanza Fama, who's our professional engineer and planner. Do we want to swear them both in this time or just go as we...
One at a time.
One at a time.
Mr. Sardell, oh, beyond these two witnesses, do you plan others? Do you plan to hopefully finish tonight?
We would like to finish tonight, we don't plan on any others. We do have a representative of the owner here in case any questions, I don't plan on presenting him, but if there is any questions, they'll be able to...
Mr. Valano has a comment.
Yeah, look, if we plan on finishing, not Mr. Harris, I won't be voting here.
Okay, we don't have our engineer slash planner tonight. Mr. Harris wrote reports. I think Mr. Valano and maybe the other members would feel more comfortable before they vote if you were here to help us out and answer some questions.
Well, let me ask you a question. What experts do you have testifying to?
We have an architect, and we have our engineer and planner, who's the same guy.
All right, why don't we do the architect?
Okay.
And that way, the engineer planner, our engineer planner will be available, and then he can hear what the testimony is of him when he's here next month.
Okay, so just the architect tonight and then call the...
That would be my advice.
Yeah, you would agree, Mr. Valano?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is he satisfied with that?
Yeah, yeah, because at least we get it started, but respectfully, you have 12 items, so, yeah, I'm giving one on our side.
And to help you a little longer, I will promise you will be the second case next month after the one that just left.
And that was...
So it might be the following month?
You never can tell, but this is the first time you're being heard.
Yes.
And I am putting you up in front of the number two case that was on the agenda for tonight.
I appreciate it.
So I am moving you up.
No, I thank you, thank you, Chairman.
If nothing else, you'll be entertained.
Chairman, if I may just ask, there was, the Vice Chairman's been referring to a report, and I just was curious to make sure that we had the same report. That is the May 11 report? Okay, that's what we have.
One's planning, one's engineering.
Yeah, they're correct.
Vote for Mr. Harris.
Both on mail, I think.
I think you only received...
Actually, it's a combination, it looks like.
No, it's not.
They're separate.
Yeah, they're separate, see?
No, I don't mind. I emailed those two.
Oh, okay.
Look at that.
Oh, okay, all right, yes, there is two. There is two.
So why don't we do architecture tonight and cover that, and then...
And we'll leave these two to next month.
Yeah, definitely have the same data. Oh, I see, okay, it has a lot of the same information on it as well.
The first page or two does, yeah.
Well, since we're proceeding, we're not going to go forward with the engineer and planner until next meeting, it's not an issue anyway.
Right.
But we will, we will definitely...
If he doesn't have it, your engineer and planner can review these reports.
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed to proceed?
Yes.
Could you raise your right hand, please, sir? With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth's sake?
I do.
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Sure, my name is Nasir Al-Mukhtar, A-L-M-U-K-H-T-A-R.
And your first name is N?
N-A-S-S-I-R. N-A-S-S-I-R, correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr.?
If you're interested, can we have the easel moved to the east?
So public...
Yeah.
No, we'll follow that one a second. I'll hit that button. Okay, can you, can you give us a little background about your education in credentials?
Sure, yeah, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, as well as other states, New York, Pennsylvania, and Virginia. I have been licensed for 13 years now, and I have been testified in front of numerous boards, and been accepted as an expert witness in the field of architecture and all of them.
Can you tell us where you went to school, please?
I went to the University of Baghdad, and I went to the NJIT for my degree equivalency, and I have NCARB, which is the National Council of Architecture Registration Boards.
Okay. Can you give us any boards that you went before in the vicinity, let's put it that way?
Sure, Jersey City, Newark.
Perfect, that's good enough. If you can go before them, you can go before anyone.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Mr. Al-Mukhtar, do you mind just identifying what the proposed building and what the development we're proposing?
Sure.
Are these plans, do we have these plans on?
This is a copy of the plans that were submitted.
Then we don't need to mark them.
Correct.
We don't need to mark that.
Correct.
So long as it hasn't changed.
Yes. So obviously, the property is located on 258 Washington Ave. It fronts on Washington Ave, and it also faces High Street towards the rear. The property slopes down significantly, almost two floors, between Washington Ave going down to High Street. Currently, the building is vacant. The face of, the site facing Washington Ave is three floors, and we have the site facing High Street is three floors as well. Previous application, should I mention the previous application, I gave a comparison?
Yeah, I think that should make sense if we could present it through the board at the last year.
Valley Street.
Valley Street.
Valley, I'm sorry. Valley Street, yeah. The previous application involved adding two floors, two floors on the, to the rear of the structure, and having a total of 13 apartments.
Seventeen.
Seventeen apartments, I'm sorry. With the new application, we're proposing adding only one floor and a total of 13 apartments. In the previous application, we had four three-bedroom units, and in the current application, we have zero three-bedroom units, which I think, what we're trying to achieve is to decrease the intensity, make it a lot less intense than the previously submitted applications. So currently, the building is vacant, and it is in need of repair and renovation. Obviously, I think most of the board members and the public do know that and acknowledge that. We are also, as mentioned before, we were having, we were proposing 10 parking spaces on the outside on Valley Street. Now, we're proposing three additional parking spaces for a total of 13 spaces.
And Mr. Al, the, some of those additional spaces are actually going to be interior to the building?
Correct. We're proposing, the rear of the building to have a garage opening, and we're proposing to, three car parking spaces indoors, and we will have to do some structural modifications to the building.
Are they tandem or...?
Two of them tandem, and one is on the side. So we were thinking the tandem parking spaces will be allocated to one apartment, the bigger ones.
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so the breakdown of the apartments, I'm calling the rear grade level, level negative two, which has no apartments, but we're proposing the three parking spaces, and then you go up one level, which is level negative one, we're proposing three two-bedroom units, and then the first floor, which is also level one, and that meets the grade level facing Washington Ave. On that first floor, we have three two-bedroom, I'm sorry, we have two retail spaces proposed and the entrance to the apartments, and then you go up one level, there are three two-bedroom units, and then second floor, which is level two, we're calling it, we have one one-bedroom unit and four two-bedroom units, so a total of five units. And then the uppermost floor, which has no addition towards the rear, we took out that proposed addition towards the rear, so we only have two units, one one-bedroom unit and one two-bedroom unit. As mentioned before, we don't have three-bedroom units anymore.
Now, Mr. Al-Mukhtar, this is the proposed developments on the existing footprint of the existing building, correct?
That's correct. We're not increasing, we're just going up one floor.
And what is the proposed size of the building?
Total square footage is 18,977 square feet, and this includes all the floors combined.
What was that number again, sir? I'm sorry. Eighteen nine seventy seven.
Eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy seven.
Thank you.
All floors, including the grade level where the parking is. Now, the first, I'm sorry.
So there's two levels below grade, below the sidewalk in the front, is that what you're telling me?
It's two levels down, correct.
Were they ever used before?
One is a grade level which has mechanical rooms, it wasn't used, but the upper, the one above it, it was used before, correct?
Do you know what it was used for?
I don't know what the previous use is of it. Currently, it's vacant in the building, but I'm not sure what the previous use of the building was. Currently, it's vacant in the building, but I'm not sure what the previous use of the building was.
Now, would the entrances to the low, to the rear grade level and lower level be from the back or from the front?
The grade level from the parking, there's an entrance from the back. And then there's another entrance separate from the retail spaces facing Washington Ave to the apartments. And it leads you to a set of staircase and then elevator. We are also proposing to provide an elevator to serve all the floors. The first page of the drawings that are submitted shows you the elevation. The intention is to restore the existing brick facade and obviously we'll change the windows. But we believe that the facade is nice, it just needs to be restored. And moving on to the next two pages, it shows you the existing floor plans with the demolition. On page D1, on the upper left corner, that's the lowest grade facing Valley. And where it has a double door currently, so we're proposing to open a garage door and moving one pier to provide for the three proposed parking spaces. The other floors are pretty much just removing the windows and moving some staircases in order to prep the building for the new proposed development.
So what we're saying is two of the stores are going to be above three of the units, correct?
Retail stores?
Yeah.
No, there is, retail stores, nothing underneath them except for a crawl space.
Nothing underneath?
No, because we're still, when we have the retail stores, we're still at the Washington Ave level and there's grade. And then it drops down behind it a little bit. If you look at... Sheet A2.
Which one, sir?
A2.
A2, yeah.
Mr. Almukhtar, maybe if you ask the chairman's question, you can switch to A6 with the time being? That might be a good explanation to show how the units can go lower grade without being underneath retail spaces.
Yeah, A6 shows you the elevation, the side elevation. And it shows you the drop of the grade.
Now, this is the existing building in the upper left-hand corner in the back?
Correct.
That's the way it is existing?
No, we're adding one floor.
You're adding a floor.
Correct.
Can I ask you why you're adding a floor?
To gain more apartment space.
Why should you gain more apartments? When you don't have enough for the density now?
Well, that's something...
And not enough for the parking either.
I, that's something we can possibly bring our operations witness up for, but I think it's going to be more of a fiscal requirement. As if you can't, you know, it wouldn't be physically, fiscally able to, you know... Financially? Financially able to redo all of these upgrades to the building without adding additional units to be able to provide for the return.
So, back to A6, the lower left elevation, that's the side elevation. To the left, you see the existing building facing Washington Ave and then you see the dropping grade where the apartments are. So there's no apartments below the reginald space, that's the question. And then going back to sheet A3. You can see the two retail spaces and then there's the entrance to the apartment in the middle. Retail space number one is six hundred and ten square feet. And retail space number two is eight hundred square feet. And then you have a corridor that leads to the apartments towards the rear, separate entrance as mentioned before and then an elevator. Then you'll have two-bedroom apartments at approximately eight hundred square feet, a little bit over eight hundred square feet. We have another apartment, two-bedroom, at eight hundred seventy-two square feet and another apartment at seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet. So the apartments have good sizes. We've managed to somehow increase the apartment sizes from the previous application. It was, you know, a lot smaller. And in general, the apartments were smaller than the previous application.
There was more apartments on the first floor?
Yeah, seventeen.
No, first floor, sorry.
There is three apartments.
What was there previously on your original application? On that first floor only, I don't care about the rest of the building.
This architect, this wasn't the same architect that testified and who compared the plans on the first one? So he may not be able to testify as to exactly what was on the original application.
Okay.
Because he came in to redesign it, I apologize.
I believe you testified that you took one of the floors out and that's where the other three bedrooms were, correct?
Correct, yes. We did remove the fourth, the fifth floor where that included, and we removed some of the three-bedroom apartments.
Right.
Actually, I do have the count from the previous application for the apartments.
Okay.
We have three, we had three apartments in the previous application.
On the first floor?
Correct. Two two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. Now we have three two-bedrooms. The two retail spaces are the same. So we have one less bedroom on the first floor.
The same amount of apartment?
Correct. Three two-bedrooms. And then the second floor, if you would like me to compare the two applications. The second floor, the previous application, has one one-bedroom apartment, three two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom. Now, we're proposing one one-bedroom and four two-bedrooms, so a total of five now and five before. Third floor, we have one one-bedroom, three two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom. Proposed is one one-bedroom and one two-bedroom, so two apartments only as opposed to five previously. So previously, seventeen apartments, now we have thirteen apartments. Also, towards the rear, we're providing a staircase for the second means of figress. The apartments will all be adaptable, accessible, you know, for handicapped, if there's any handicapped person who could accommodate that. And also an elevator to serve the, all the floors.
Mr. Almukhtar, would you mind explaining what each new residential unit would look like? Would they have a living room, dining room, kitchen area?
Sure.
Or, you know, we don't have to go through each individual one, but what a two-bedroom would look like and what amenities a two-bedroom would have versus what amenities a one-bedroom would have?
Sure. If we look at sheet A4, apartment number eight is a two-bedroom apartment. It has a living and dining space of about two hundred forty square feet. It has a kitchen also. A washer dryer facility inside each apartment, separate. And then we have a handicap accessible bathroom and two bedrooms, a hundred fifty. Each bedroom is approximately eleven by fourteen and then the other bedroom is thirteen by fourteen. So the sizes are very generous and it's, most of the apartments are open plan concept. So you have, when you open the door, it feels much bigger than what it really is also. Also, I should mention that most of the apartments have balconies, especially the ones towards the rear, they do have balconies. And then the one, this floor has all two-bedroom apartments. The front portion has one-bedroom apartments, five, a hundred seventy-three, and they have seven hundred and ninety-five, the other one is a two-bedroom. The one-bedroom apartments also have a washer dryer facility inside the apartment. Plenty of windows, good size.
So in your expert opinion, you believe that these are well-designed residential units?
I do like the layouts, yes, correct.
Now, with regard to the facade and elevation, let's start with the, off the front of Washington Street. Can you please just describe what, you know, what it looks like now versus what it would look like if the application is approved and developed?
Sure. Currently, it's a brick facade with some arch top windows up on the third floor. And the intention is to restore that brick facade and there are some lentils and sills, stone lentils and sills that will be restored as well and the windows will all be replaced. I did prepare a couple of renderings for the front, color renderings for the front and the rear, if you'll allow me.
Yes, that'd be great, because mark those as a...
A1, you have two of them?
Uh, two separately.
Pick one, mark it A1.
A2.
But, I'm sorry, A2. And then you describe it and then the other one will be A3 and you can describe that for the board too.
What was A1, Chairman?
A1 was the updated publication.
Oh, I, I... Uh, let's, Mr. Almukhtar, if we start with, let's start with A2, that's A2, and identify what we're looking at.
Correct. This is A2, this is a, this portion of the building facing Washington Ave. So basically, as we mentioned before, it has those arch top windows. There is a semi-circle or arch above the main entrance of the building. This would be the entrance that leads to the apartments. And these are the two retail spaces. The brick is existing, but as we mentioned, it does need renovation and it needs restoration. There's a freeze up the top. This will, the intention is also to restore that to its original condition.
With regard, just before we move on, with regard to, as a pedestrian walk-in by, aside from renovating the brick and making it look newer, would there be any difference, any difference with regard to height or the size of the building when someone walks by with regard to viewpoint?
No, no change whatsoever. It will remain the same.
So it would look like the same building, but just in better condition?
Correct. The addition is also only towards the rear of the building and it would not be visible from Washington Ave.
Thank you. Now, can you please now identify what, the mark is A3, please?
Yeah, A3 is at the rear of the building, looking from Valley Street. So this would be the cut that we are proposing for a garage door that would accommodate the three indoor parking spaces. And this uppermost floor is the additional floor. So currently, the building is up to here, the finish, which is stucco. The bottom base floor would be the matching color with the brick facade facing Washington Ave so that we can somehow connect the two facades. And then this one, we thought keeping the same color would be a little bit heavy, so we chose a lighter color for the upper two floors. And then you can also see the balconies for the apartments.
And now, the elevation of the rear portion of the property, that does not get as high as the front portion?
No, it's still one floor lower. The previous application was to bring it up to the three-story level facing Washington Ave. And we took out this uppermost floor. So now we have three floors above the parking and mechanical space.
And once again, the, with regard, aside from increasing a level in height, the, a floor in height, I should say, there's no additional building being proposed to expand what's already there. It's going to the same building footprint, is that correct?
We're going directly up above the existing walls, correct.
And we're just going to be renovating the existing walls, we're not carrying them down or rebuilding them?
Yes, absolutely. Obviously, providing the...
The exterior wall or the interior wall?
Uh, the exterior, I'm speaking of.
Okay.
The interior will be fully re-subdivided.
That's the additional floor?
The uppermost floor, correct. Obviously, we'll be cutting some windows, you know, as required for the apartments from the existing wall.
So... If the, my makeup...
Oh, absolutely.
Your garbage will be out within the building? You know, your, your, your garbage container. Is that within the building or outside?
It would be in the basement level, the garage level, and then it would be...
We remember from last time you talked about that.
Yeah. We, there's a lot of space that is not used in the lower level and we're not going to use it. There was supposed to be a laundry facility there and I believe a gym, but we're not going to do that. So we are eliminating that. We don't have a lot of space for garbage and refus.
But we are, we are providing the laundry services in each unit.
This, this time around, it will be an inch in, correct.
So can you show me, you know, drawing, where the, the mechanism would be, an outline, you know, so I can see how much...
So we have it here.
And one of the particles being in the apartment or in the basement? Rooftop?
The, actually, the engineer has provided for refuse area outside, on the side plan, yes.
So is it going to take up the part of that or?
No, it's to the side of the building. I don't know, if he should mark this or should it be presented later?
Yeah, this is, this is the, I was actually going to address the refus and all that when we present the engineer, because that's under his plan.
But it'll be outside.
You ready? So, this is not the engineer?
No, this is the architect.
Like, the engineer is going to come up next?
Well, we, now we're going to put him up at the next meeting, yes, yes.
So, so I'm clear, refuge is outside?
Yes, refuge will be outside and we can talk about where it's located and designed for that.
And mechanical, we're going to have an engineer and an architect?
Correct, speak.
The mechanical, each apartment will have its furnace inside the unit. And then the condenser will be rooftop, so there will be a very light condenser on the roof.
And which rooftop would be, would it be located on the rear or the front?
Most likely in the addition, towards the rear. And it won't be visible, obviously, because it's very small.
And we'll provide a shield.
Separate for each unit, correct.
So the addition, are you refinishing, you know, in your lens, right? It looks like it's all the same material. Is it finishing it, matching it?
We're proposing stucco for the entire existing, yes, existing and additional, so that it all matches, it looks like one surface. It doesn't look like a separate addition.
So the materials would be like a drive-in or?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. James, sorry.
No, it's okay. Actually, I have no further questions with witness of the board.
Questions by members of the board?
I do have one question. I seem to recall when the previous testimony was given, the front of the building, the facade, there was a canopy that was going to be erected over the storefronts. I noticed that in this rendering, that canopy is no longer here. The building is beautiful, I mean aesthetically, I think we all would like to see this building restored to life. But I just was curious, why, why was the canopy removed? I think that the previous architect was also going to put in planters, if I remember correctly, along the sidewalk.
Agree.
Yes.
We can add those if the board wishes, that, thinks that this would be, yeah, I agree with the planters, definitely. We don't have any objections to that.
Any other questions by members of the board?
And the, uh...
Audings?
The audings, do?
We can add that, yeah.
I don't have a preference.
The audings, I think you have the name of the business.
Correct.
Any other questions by members of the board based upon...
I did have one question that came up, frankly, Mr. Dilywitz or Andrew, so what's the term for that, the apartments, where he, they're handicap, adaptable, right?
Yeah, although he's going to have to make the bathrooms, then he has to make the kitchens, too.
Right, adaptable.
Yeah, everything, they're new, so they won't have to be...
Adaptable, not necessarily accessible, right?
The requirement, there's no difference in terms of space requirements between adaptable and accessible. The only difference is providing...
And one is done and one is not.
Grab bars, correct. So if there is a person that would need those, it can be easily installed. You have the block and you have the pitch.
You have to get it ready.
Absolutely. So the space requirements are the same.
I, I know you architects like to say that and, you know, I feel differently because adaptable means it can't be made that way. So when the building's done, right, and tenant X moves out, you're not going to tell me, you're going to make me a... you're going to make the apartment accessible when a new tenant comes in. I know what's going to happen, you're not going to run into that, Kenny. That's why I say, and Frankie, he's more versatile, and he, I have to be honest, he educated me because, you know, I like accessible. And the code says, it only has to be adaptable, right, Frankie?
Yeah, well, yeah, he's going to make them all, because it's an apartment, you know, so he's going to have to make them all adaptable. And the bathroom is going to be accessible.
That's my worry, that's my worry.
It's very minor, except for the grab bars.
Right.
Everything else is the same. But New Jersey is a little bit, with the code, they're very specific.
No, I mean, if, if you went all the way, the kitchen would be different, right?
Uh, yeah.
Right, but we don't have to do that.
That's height-wise, but they have to be ready, so in case somebody does come in, that's handy, have to go do it. So he has to put them in when he's like doing the framing.
Right, you have the blocking and the framing and everything, absolutely.
Okay, so that's, that's the...
That's resolved.
But that, that's handled at our level, well, it's not on the board.
Yeah, I know, I know, I just like to push that out.
Okay. Any other members of the board have a question? Any members of the public have a question, based upon testimony? Mr. Glumon?
I'm Tom Grohlman, 162 Valley Street.
Kay's name, last name, please.
G R O L I M O N D. I'm also chairman of the Babel Historic Commission, and there's historic significance to this building, it's the original town hall.
Is this a question of the testimony only?
This is not the gift testimony. What I want to do is ask about, there's a stone on the front of it that says Babel Hall, I think that should be restored, I mean, up there, it's not on the drawings.
That's testimony.
No, that's, well, actually, he could ask them if they're going to keep that.
Are you going to ask them that, are you going to keep that stone there, preserve the building?
Yes, everything will be preserved, the front, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Fran and Tom?
Mr., you described which floor of the apartment on, now looking at the front of the building, the top floor with the arch windows, how many apartments at that front level?
The top floor, we have two apartments.
Were, how many bedrooms?
Uh, sure. There is one, one bedroom unit, and then one, two bedroom unit.
On the third floor, that's it?
That's just two units, correct.
All right, now, do you have a plan where you're putting the addition on?
This is the addition here, on sheet number eight four.
All right. How many units are going, is that, is that addition going to come in?
In the addition, we have three units.
Only three?
Correct.
Just to clarify, there's five on the floor, but this, the addition portion will only have three?
The addition, three, and then the front portion, two units, just like the, or above it, right?
And the three, uh, the units, are they going to be two bedrooms or one bedroom?
On the addition, we have, uh, three two-bedroom units.
So the addition will come with three two-bedroom units.
Yes, sir, name it out, please.
Raymond Sobanko, 22, Robtree. Can your original plan, they've got to put a super apartment in the basement, is that still in the plans?
No.
And any questions by members of the public? Now, is this going to be your only witness, or do you have the owner of the property or the head of corporation?
Well, I, I have a representative of the owner here, I wasn't planning on calling them as a witness.
Well, I think we may have questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just before we go on, I'm looking at A six, right? So it looks like there's two two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom in the addition. Am I looking at it wrong? A four, A four. Is it two two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom in the addition?
In the addition, we have one, two, three units, two-bedroom, two-bedroom, and two-bedroom, three two-bedroom units.
The top one has bedrooms on both sides?
Apartment number eight, there's a bedroom on the right and a bedroom on the left. Is that what you, is that the apartment you're talking about?
Yeah, this, this is confusing.
Mr. Almack, if maybe you can just point out, identify exactly on the plan, where the...
I'm sorry, which unit are you talking about, number eight, apartment number eight?
Top right-hand corner on A floor.
Upper?
Well, let's just identify all the bedrooms.
This is the one bedroom unit.
But that's, that's not the addition, that's what's existing.
That's not the addition.
That's our, yeah.
That's why I'm being confused.
The addition is only the rear portion of the structure.
Oh, it's this one?
Right, this is facing Washington, it, it only has two units facing Washington.
Okay.
Okay, no problem, sure.
That's it, any other questions by members of the public? You got another question, sir?
Which side is the garbage refuse container, remember?
It's towards the rear, uh...
We're going to have...
Right next to the staircase here, but this will, obviously, explain more by the engineer when he goes down the stairs.
Won't that interfere with parking spaces?
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
No, there's a little corner.
That would be on the north side, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll provide testimony from our engineer that will explain the design and how it should work.
Okay. Any other questions by members of public of this witness? Any additional questions of this witness by members of the board? None?
Okay.
Do you wish to claim to call your...
Well, if, if the board definitely has some questions, we can bring our president of the owner out.
Does his board always have questions?
Then we'll bring the representative of the, the owner, Whitney Gary, to answer any questions the board may have as to the...
Let's come on up, raise your right hand, face, with regard to this application, thanks with testimony you're about to give, showing the truth, so we can...
Yes.
Could you state your names, spell your last name, please?
Full name, Whitney Gary, G A R E Y.
What's your first name, sir?
Whitney, W H I T E R Y.
Thank you.
And before we start getting to questions of the board, would you please just identify your, your position and role with regard to the entity of the owner and the applicant here?
Sure, so I'm the acquisitions director at Store Capital. Store Capital's the owner of 258, 260 Washington Ave. I'm also a project manager for Store Capital.
And you are the project manager for this developer?
Yes, at this point, I'm the one who knows the most about the project, I hired the architect, the lawyers, the engineers, and made most of the decisions.
Okay. All right. Does anybody want to start, or you want to start, or?
I want to.
I'll start then. Then technically, who's owned the property already, there's not an option to buy, whoever the owner is.
Correct.
Okay. Second question, the question I brought up before, why would you put an addition to the building if you cannot even satisfy the requirements of the building that's existing?
It comes down to kind of putting the money into the property to make a return that's feasible or market rate, or significant, um, costs that are within the property, so to make, that makes sense for us to develop, we would need the additional incremental rent.
So you're saying you have to put an addition on it?
Yes.
And if the board said, we would not approve it, you don't have to park it, then who would you go?
We would have to rethink about whether we're going to go.
Any other questions by members of the board?
Not at this time. I don't want to hear it.
I'm sure he'll be back next...
Yeah, we will definitely have this witness here to answer any additional questions that may come up after hearing testimony from the planner and engineer.
Currently, any questions by members of the public? Mr. Fran and Tom?
Yes, sir, isn't the, a big cost of the project putting on that addition?
In some ways, yes, in some ways, no. The addition actually is stick-built, so it's cheaper to do stick-built versus if you had to go, what we were going to do with the two floors, would have had to, what it costs, what, I think, different materials would have had to be used. So a lot of the cost from within the actual interior, mechanicals, so plumbing, electric, all the fixtures, a lot of kind of labor specs, so that's kind of the way we're looking at it.
What I'm saying, for, for, the dollars amount spent to renovate that building and add the addition, is a large percentage of the total job.
Not necessarily.
Do you have a breakdown in that?
Um, not specifically versus the added units versus the system.
I'm talking the total cost of putting the addition on and the building and supplying all the mechanical fixtures and flooring of the apartments.
You're partially on the addition, or you're talking about the whole building?
The addition.
Just the addition, limited to the addition.
Might that be an engineering question?
Well, I was going to say, I think that is a fair question, I think something that we might, might want to answer after we hear the engineering testimony, but also, I don't believe the witness has that information at his fingertips right now, it's something that maybe we can come back to.
Well, maybe you should bring it next month, then.
Because I think that's a fair question, I think it's something that we'll be able to...
Well, I don't think it's an engineering question, I think it's an architectural question, and also, I'm sure he didn't go into this unless he got estimates of what it would cost. So I'm sure there is records here of what they estimated would cost to do this, that, and everything else.
All right, we can come back, at the next year, we'll provide information as to the breakdown in cost and why, and probably a little more information as to why that, that extra level is needed.
Okay, that's good.
The reason, the reason I asked the question is because he brought up the issue of the financial viability of the project, and so that's why I asked if we knew the financial numbers on adding those five apartments.
And actually, this might, we might be able to, somewhat, to answer your question, the architect in general, maybe not specific to this property, but in general, the architect probably answered the fact, or the question as to, um, the cost of renovation versus the cost of new construction. A lot of times, the cost of renovation is more expensive than the cost of reconstruction because you're dealing with set limits in, in walls that are already there, that you have to make things work, versus starting from scratch, is that correct, or can you maybe go into that slightly?
That's right, because you're paying for the property, you're paying for the building. So the more units you have, it would make more economical sense, because the return will be more, although the cost will be slightly higher. But for instance, if you have ten units, you divide that with, by the, the cost of the land, if you have fifteen units, then the cost of the land would be reduced by the three-quarters. So it would be divided into the units, so the more units you have...
I don't think that was his question.
No, yeah, the question...
In general.
In general, the cost, the cost, the cost of construction in general, it, it would, is the cost of construction for renovation projects higher than the cost of construction for a new construction coming from scratch?
Versus an addition, you have an addition, you have new construction, and you have renovation.
Fair, fair enough.
Yeah, the, I think the renovation is cheaper than the addition and then the new construction.
Well, I think Mr. Fran, I don't mind, is trying to ask, is that the money you want to provide it or not? But, but I think what he's asking, if I'm wrong, please say so, that when you say that the reason why you have more apartments because you want a higher ROI, I get it, right? And that's fine. The question is, what are you saying, if you didn't add the addition, if the total project is a hundred bucks, right, is the addition fifty bucks? And if it is, then state it, and maybe, you know, that's how you weigh out, and you turn out a basket. So, you look there?
Basically, that, that should be, number one, I'm a contractor for forty-three, I'm mainly in renovation, but I know, and I've done new construction. So that's why I asked that question, so we know exactly where we're going and, and what that cost of that addition and all the completion of the apartments would be in relation to the...
And that's up to you, that's up to you, you can...
We'll, we'll get that information.
And the reason why I say it's up to you, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, the reason why, if you want to provide it or not, the reason, I would say, that the question came up, because when the question was asked, why you adding the apartments, you cited finances.
So that means he opened up the door, by saying...
That's all I'm saying.
No, I, we, we understand that, and I don't, I don't think it's an unfair question based upon the, the application before the board and, and our justifications for looking for the variance, so we will, we will definitely get that information for the board for the next year.
And there is the, you might want to refer next meeting, Mr. Chairman, if you want to apply, uh, if you need to report, I think the way we have efficiencies and how we calculate how many points it costs, that you need, so you guys, the way our engineer calculated.
We'll definitely...
So you might want to tell them, right? Because I'm telling right now when I ask you that question.
Appreciate that, though.
So any other questions by anybody, of either witness? None? Okay, then we'll adjourn this to the next meeting, it will be the second case on the agenda after bright manner. September third, no further notice required?
Nope. Thank you very much.
Any issues with extensions of commission, if you need any?
Did we review the, the notices?
Yes.
Okay. That's on the record. So now we'll go on to the resolutions to the memorial law. Thank you. We'll be out of here in our room.
First matter is CD 2015-13, Matulano. Yes. Shelby, Fucci, Delgertia.
Yes.
Bruce, I'm signing. Second one, the matter of TV 2015-06, Caruso. Yes. Matulano.
Yes.
Shelby, Fucci, Delgertia. Shelby, Delgertia.
Yes!
Next case, CD 2015-10, Caruso. Yes. Matulano.
Yes.
Shelby.
Yes.
Fucci.
Yes.
Delgertia.
Yes.
Okay, now, before we adjourn, I need to know if anybody wants to go to Atlantic City, yes or no?
No.
No?
No.
No? Caruso? No, you say no, no?
No.
What take is it?
It's the week before Thanksgiving.
I have to check my calendar.
Yeah, just give me a call. Okay?
It's a holiday weekend, a celebrity weekend.
Yes, well, those are the way it breaks. Well, it doesn't get on here. Maybe we'll have another, another appointment by then.
We better.
No? Is there anybody else who planned not to be here next month, so I know? Hello? Anybody else who planned not to be here next month?
No, I'm here.
Okay. So it's just you then?
No, I'm here.
Oh, you just said, well, if I'm not here...
Well, I should have served me a holiday weekend.
Who cares?
I care.